As far as City Council Subcommittee on Economic Development and Tourism will be called to order, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Raposo?
Here.
Counselor Tip?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Not bad.
That's the old council president days.
There you go.
I've been remembering that for years. First item on our agenda is citizens' input. We have two people signed up to speak. First person is Sandy Dennis, 132 Highland Avenue, regarding the Waterfront Cultural Districts and funding. Mr. Dennis, you want to come with her?
Yeah.
Okay. Dave Dennis as well, 132 Highland Avenue, Fall River, regarding the same subject matter. Three minutes each.
Oh, good, three minutes each.
Unless they want to waive the minutes and roll.
I'm sure you have one of these.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, first of all, thank you, Counselor Pante and the committee for having us tonight, allowing us to speak. And basically, what we'd like to do is speak on the Waterfront Cultural District. I noticed on the agenda that you have Main Street and the Flint for funding. And in your last meeting, when we came to speak, it was going to be, I guess, recommended that there be consideration for funding for the Waterfront Cultural District. And I didn't happen to see that on tonight's agenda. And I just wanted to come, and Dave and I wanted to come and kind of let the committee know how much work we've done, not only in the district, but over the last 11 years in the city. But primarily, we're going to focus on the cultural district. It is a state-designated cultural district, as you know, and unfortunately, it was designated during COVID, so it set us back two years. But if you've been watching recently in the newspaper and on Facebook, through our aggressive advocacy, we've been working with Mass Office of Travel and Tourism, and we've been able to identify some information that hasn't been, I mean, promoted for Fall River, primarily the Titanic. The Mott did a huge blog on the Titanic in Massachusetts, and Fall River was eliminated. So we work with Blue Moon Marketing, and she's been working to put together information for Mott. And we do have, they did do a new blog on the Titanic with Fall River. They also did a blog on Fall River with a lot of the different assets in the cultural district and Fall River, which is huge. Just those blogs will bring in much more traffic into the Waterfront Cultural District and those assets. So I'm sure these people, like the Battleship America, they'll see a huge uptick in business this summer. Because of that blog, they also, Sam Searle also did a big story on Fall River and the tourism opportunities and like a sleeping city. That was just in the publication. All of that can be found on our Facebook page. Some of the things that we've done, and this is all the information related to that, I don't have copies for you, everything that we've done, we have forwarded to the City Council, the Mayor's Office, and the state reps. One of the things that we have done is we've worked on the Tourism Initiative Report that we sent to all of you. Counselor Tip, you obviously don't have it because you're new, but we'd be happy to send it to you. But we did do an entire initiative on tourism, and basically, it's, the initiative aimed to improve the city's Fall River's presence on key tourism and travel websites, primarily Mass Office of Travel and Tourism, Southeastern Mass Visitors Bureau, TripAdvisor, and Yelp. So we found a lot of areas that we just weren't being represented and opportunities that the city's really losing out on. So we put this initiative together and some of the things that we're working on, and some of them are, we emailed all of the cult, the tourism organizations to let them know, broken links, things that have misinformation, things that aren't on there for them to correct. We also worked on the Waterfront Cultural District Marketing Plan that we worked very closely with MCC on to fulfill all the initiatives that we put forward. That plan went out to everyone, and it was a lengthy plan as well. Some of the other things that we've done is we have a new website, because our original website got hacked, that has a dedicated staff for the, dedicated tab for the district. We also have a new Facebook page just for the district. We have a new logo. We have brochures. We have all kinds of marketing materials that we've been working on this year. And we've done this with all our own efforts, no efforts or support from the city. And we're asking that, after 11 years of doing all this work, the district's thriving. It's thriving. If you can look at every other district in the city, the Waterfront Cultural District is thriving. If you drove down there this weekend, people are building, people are growing, we're adding new businesses to the district. There really aren't any businesses leaving the district as opposed to other areas in the city. So I come to you tonight to ask that you please, if you're going to fund downtown and the Flint, to please give some funding to the Waterfront Cultural District, because we're doing a lot of work with very little, lot of in-kind, lot of volunteerism, and, you know, we do pay a marketing firm to help us. But we certainly, to keep that district growing, could certainly use a little bit more support from the city. Many of the cultural districts in the state do get support and funding from their municipalities. We don't.
Okay.
So we are asking that if you can put some of that funding to us, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Das?
Yeah, the other thing I would say is, I think Sandra covered most of it, but I really, I really think it's extremely unfortunate that the Forest of Cultural District in large part, and certainly Creative Arts Network after 11 years, has been largely ignored by the city. Now, I would, I'll be generous and say, maybe it was just an oversight, but I doubt it. For 11 years, we've done an awful lot of work in the city, and I think most of you at the table know it. I don't know why, why that the, the city hasn't been more receptive. I think that, you know, the Waterfront Cultural District project alone was a five-year project that nobody wanted to do. But for Creative Arts Network, we wouldn't have a Forest of Cultural District, period, because nobody would do it. Nobody wants to take the project on. It's thriving. We know what's going on with the waterfront now. As I've said many, many times over the years, so goes the waterfront, so goes Fall River. It's our, it's our last opportunity in the city. If we don't get that right down on the waterfront, I'm not sure what else, what else Forest has to offer. And the waterfront district can be a large part of that. But again, we can't do it with just two people. And I know, people say, well, and I'll, you know, and I'll say it here, that Dennis says, it's not, it's not just us. It's, it's a committee, we do, we've done an awful lot of work with an awful lot of people. Most of the initiative does come from a very small group of people, and yeah, two of the people sitting at the table here. And we've done it with no remuneration, nobody gets a paycheck. So I think the city at least, at a very least, owes us, you know, some type of consideration, not only recognizing the effort of, of the Waterfront District Committee, the opportunities that are there, and also the work that's been done on the waterfront and throughout the city. So, you know, I, I, I think, again, I, I think that it's, there are plenty of opportunities on the waterfront, and there are a lot of people doing a lot of good work down there. So.
Okay. Just before I acknowledge any of my colleagues, even though we're in citizens' input and we do have the resolutions before us, I just want to ask the question, have you spoke to the mayor? Because the mayor's office would be the department of which the appropriation orders or any funding source would come from. We can appropriate.
So, 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 so let me just say this on the record, we have gotten absolutely no assistance from the mayor's office, and we have spoke to the mayor's office not once, but twice, several times in the past.
Okay. Questions?
That was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda are the minutes from March 26, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes has been made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counselor Tip. Any discussion on the motion? Terry Nutt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is a resolution to discuss funding to improve downtown South Main Street. It was adopted and amended in May of 2025, referred over to this committee. Resolution by Counselor Pereira, where I'll read into the record. Whereas South Main Street is one of the most historic streets within the city of Fall River with beautiful architecture and unique building facades, and whereas many buildings on South Main Street are vacant, vandalized, or in need of significant restoration, and whereas revitalization of the downtown area of the city will positively affect economic growth for restaurants, businesses, and tourism. Now therefore be it resolved that the Economic Development and Tourism convene with the Director of City Operations Corporation Council and the Executive Director of the Community Development Agency, and any other interested parties to discuss methods of funding that could be utilized to improve the neighborhood of downtown South Main Street. Mr. Deon? Anybody else here on this?
Yes.
Come on down. Hello. As you approach, you should state your name for the record, please.
Michael Deon, Director of Community Development.
Sarah Page, Executive Director of the Forest of Cultural Redevelopment Authority.
Councilors, questions? Mr. Deon, would you like to give a brief overview?
Well, there has been a lot that is happening on South Main Street. We had, South Main Street is a TDI district, transformative district initiative. We have had several, several meetings throughout the years, but what has happened with that area and, and what has happened with the actual city was the COVID crisis. COVID really put a damper on our efforts in that community, in that, in that section. We were making real strides, I think, and then, you know, like anything else, COVID hit, and everybody started going home. What has happened since then has been some refocusing on North Main Street with South Main Street also. I've asked the Redevelopment Authority to be part of this meeting because she can give you more information about South Main Street. I know we've done a parking study. In terms of housing, we've worked with the people who own the Academica building and also the owners of the old Aetna Insurance Building, looking at putting some housing in there, some workforce housing. We've also talked to, I've talked to Matt.
Thomas?
Thomas, our tax title attorney. 308 South Main Street is a problem property that we've had in tax title. That's finally coming out of tax title, so we will be dealing with that in the very near future. That's the, on the corner of South Main and Columbia Street.
And Rodman.
And Rodman. We also are, are going to start probably this summer, I want to say sometime in July, and I'm not, I can't give you 100% of all the information from Dan Aguirre, but we're looking at redoing Columbia Street, and we're looking at redoing that intersection to make it more friendly. You know, Viva put their headquarters in that area for a while. You've seen some murals go up in that section. But I brought Sarah along to give more information about the South Main Street area.
Great. Well, when I got here at the Redevelopment Authority in 2020, the Transformative Development Initiative, which is a program of mass development, they had made a commitment to have a fellow work with a lot of businesses and people in the South Main Street area. And so one of the first things that we did was work on this state program and develop a rapid recovery plan for that South Main Street area. And I just thought I'd mention a few things that were goals and have happened. So one was improve the public realm and increased amenities, and the group really focused on wanting Jerry Lawton Park to be redone. And to do it in a way that it could activate South Main Street. So there's a place for concerts to happen, you know, kind of a place for bands to set up. There's the vision that outdoor dining could go on there, and that tables and chairs could be stored in the Cherry and Webb Building, and restaurants could kind of host pop-up events there. And then, oh, it also talked about the importance of pop-up activities, and there were some during the pandemic out here on Gramada Plaza, and they were attended. It was one of those efforts, like get people outside enjoying things. And we worked on a plan for outdoor dining, and outdoor dining happens at a number of restaurants in the downtown area, and that was successful. Then pop-up activities and kind of activating downtown has continued with both FRAC and Viva Fall River working on that. An effort that we worked really hard on and didn't fully achieve our goal was the goal to increase administrative capacity with the development of a district management organization. So some cities have a business improvement district downtown, and it's very complicated. All the, a lot of property owners have to basically agree to be, in a way, taxed specifically to fund activities in the downtown and to fund kind of a downtown manager. And we ended up not getting the complete support that would be needed to do that. However, what grew out of that is a lot of businesses in north downtown are really coming together, meeting once a month, and sponsoring kind of activities that a few restaurants together collaborate on. We have Bank Five and their whole new headquarters, and our fellow, we still have a TDI fellow, and he's been working with all of us on pedestrian safety, which was a concern, and a number of issues. And Viva ended up going down to Purchase Street, and so it's kind of a Purchase Street-North Main Street area. And so that's happening. A couple more things about South Main Street is that there are a lot of private developers planning or talking about developing buildings for housing. And if a lot of housing comes to South Main Street, it will create much more activity there and people to go down to restaurants and really frequent stores. And so that's a really important effort that we really hope is going to yield a lot of fruit in the reasonably near future. The other thing the Redevelopment Authority did was hire a historic consultant and try to turn the South Main Street area into a second downtown historic district. We first wanted to expand the existing downtown historic district, which is really north Main Street focused. But the, we really went back and forth with the Historic Commission, the State Historic Commission, and they wouldn't let us expand it, and we thought that we would be allowed to create a South Main Street historic district. And they ended up coming back and saying, you can have like three or four historic districts, a few of these buildings, a few of these, which isn't really what a historic district usually, that's not how they usually are done. So, so we've kind of set that on hold for a while, but we're, I think we're picking it up again because one of the goals of that is that developers can get historic tax credits, which really helps fund development of buildings that need a lot of work, which those buildings do. So, so that's, I think, a next thing that the Redevelopment Authority is looking at revitalizing, because we, we were frustrated and kind of set it on hold for a little while. The last thing I want to say is that, working with the mayor's office, we just put a grant proposal into the vacant storefront program. And it's a program that the Redevelopment Authority applied to years ago, and it was not as helpful as it is now. They redesigned it. So it would allow us to get $50,000 in tax credits for the next year, and we could incentivize businesses to come into vacant storefronts with that. The Redevelopment Authority Board agreed to match that with a $10,000 grant. So every time we gave an allocation of tax credits, 20% grant would also go with that. And so that would be usable on North Main, South Main, and Pleasant Street, where we have vacant storefronts in all of those areas. And my hope is, I believe we'll get, we'll be funded, and my hope would be that every year we can go back and we can build kind of a program that people learn about, and we'll build some momentum on filling storefronts, because that's just a huge priority.
Thank you. Counselor Raposo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Deon, you mentioned a parking study. Can you share that with, with us? Is that possible?
We can, yeah, we'll talk to Ms. Aguirre, we'll get a share with you.
Okay. That'd be great.
It just got published.
Yeah, it just got done.
Oh, the one that he sent out recently, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the same one I'm talking about? Great, because I already started reading that. So I, I think my, my think for this particular resolution is obviously, there just seems to be a gap of, of, like Purchase Street here is, is doing pretty well. You get past this corner over here near Government Center, it's pretty good, and then there's just a gap of nothing. And then it kind of picks up again as you go past Columbia Street and you get toward TA and what have you, there's a lot of activity. So I guess, to me, the focus seems to be this, this section right here that's just dead, you know, and it doesn't seem, and you would think with the courthouse there, you'd think there'd be more activity. It seems like, you know, there was a restaurant or two that were there, they're now gone, and it just keeps, it keeps a rolling, you know, rolling issue. So I guess, in the plans that you're discussing there, outside of housing and storefront development, are there any other considerations of what could be done in the next five, 10 years about that, that particular section that seems to be not only empty, but also now falling apart as time passes us by?
Well, it was good that the Brew, Brew District came into the Cherry and Webb Building, and that's activated that area a bit. But yeah, recently, some more storefronts have been vacated.
The Rite Aid, for example.
You know, what?
The Rite Aid, left.
Yeah.
Which was a big one.
It's a big hole. Yeah.
The Chico Furniture.
Chico Furniture closed.
And then there are a couple of others there, too. So I think what needs to be done, and we did a lot of thinking during this whole planning period, we talked about complementary businesses, you know, we have this whole bridal and prom business going on, you know, could we bring shoe stores and lingerie stores and, you know, other stores that people who go there would want to, you know, go to Alexandria's would want to also frequent. And there's just a lot of thinking that needs to be done about how do we fill those storefronts? There may be business grants for businesses that we could go after, which was one thing discussed in this plan. But it, maybe we need a committee just very focused on those couple of blocks that really need work. I'm really excited that Matt Thomas is saying that, that building that's been looking so bad and vacant on the corner of Rodman and South Main will finally be open to redevelopment. And that, that could be a game changer. If we could get a few buildings that are vacant to, you know, get redeveloped, that would make a big difference. But I think we need a group working on how do we fill storefronts there.
And is, is it true that the Cherry and Webb Building is up for sale currently as well? And the plan is mixed-use housing and, and what's currently there, essentially?
Yep.
Okay.
It's going to zoning soon.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. In terms of my only question, or comment, rather, is I really think the future of South Main Street is going to be centered around parking, because you're not going to have a successful downtown, in my opinion, if it's hard to, for people to go show up to work and for it to be operational. What I hear on what might be happening in the Cherry and Webb Building, my first question is where is everybody going to park? Granted, you can probably park in one of the parking garages and pay for that, but you're walking up a block, which is what it is. You can discount that in rent. So I think there's a two thing, two-pronged approach that needs to be brought into consideration, whether it's through the Redevelopment Authority or traffic studies or whatever. I've always maintained, I don't know if it's plausible or even possible, is to make South Main Street a certain part of it a one-way, you know, from, whether it's from Columbia Street all the way down coming towards Government Center, very similar to Newport for more parking. I think that might be an opportunity. I'm not sure if that's possible, but maybe that's something that the council would be able to refer over through a resolution to have the traffic department look into that, if that's possible. That will do a number of things. That will increase parking, that will increase parking fees that we would be able to charge for parking meters, and it would allow restaurants, or businesses, a more capable outlook to determine whether or not they want to put their business there. Just being a business owner myself, I can attest to the fact that one of the first things we look for is adequate parking for our customers, right? So the future of our, of that, I believe, is going to be, certainly going to be parking. I think that's really my only comment on that. There's more that can be done, certainly. Oh, the other thing is, I, I will say that what makes a downtown successful in any other urban city or town, if you look into Worcester or anywhere else, is, is housing. I think having housing in the middle of our downtown, people showing up, living there, leaving, going to the store, going to the local market, that's an economic development driver. And any kind of project of sorts, whether it's low to moderate, or market rate, or combination of both in our downtown, I think would definitely have a huge impact on getting traffic flow. And, and that could be looked upon when you see what some of the market-rate housing has done in our community and where it has happened. So I'll just throw that out there for whatever it's worth, but if the council, if anything comes from this resolution, if you want to do something, we'll, up for discussion. Counselor Raposo?
Yeah. My only other follow-up question is, similar to the plan we'll talk about that we're doing in the Flint, has a process like that been engaged for the South Main Street area?
Well, we have the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan, and, and really, this rapid recovery plan was very much a coherent plan that looked at a lot of ways to rejuvenate South Main Street. So this, both of those could be pulled out and a committee work on, you know, how do we implement some of the recommendations? And raising money will be really important, but I agree with Counselor Pante that to get housing there is critical. And the parking study was a significant effort with a significant grant that funded it, and it really is important to pull that out and think about the recommendations, because one of the recommendations is to look at how parking is managed, because there is a lot of parking, it needs to be managed differently, and there's some cost associated with that. You know, if you want to switch to a system that people are highly recommending, where you can get on your phone and pay for, you know, pay for your parking. you can get on your phone and pay for, you know, pay for your parking and then if you're in a meeting and it's going over, you can add an hour to your parking. If we can implement some of those systems, that would be fabulous and that's really recommended and it will take some investment to, to change our present system to a new system.
Yeah, I mean, I know we, in the budget deliberations, uh, Mrs. McArthur talked a little bit about the upgrading of the, the coin meters to the digital meters now, but also a possibility that the garage particularly could utilize something like that, an app-based system that allows people to add or subtract or whatever it needs to be. Yeah, I think, I agree, my colleague, as far as the parking is, is the huge thing. And, and the fact that the Cherry and Webb Building is up for sale to have housing, that could be like the pinpoint building where it starts there and then it begins to spread, you know, up the street hopefully is, is kind of the, the goal. Okay, and, and, and on South Main Street, are there any buildings that are too far gone at this point, like there are in the Flint?
Well, there's the question about that building at the corner of Rodman and South Main, I hope it's.
That's the only one?
The only one.
I mean, that's a question. It's been, you know, it's been deteriorating for quite a while.
Okay, so there's, there's no reality of any of the buildings on South Main Street that could be a possibility of it's, it's a knockdown?
No, and I think you have some great anchor tenants. I know that, uh, we learned a lot from the TDI District, we, we've gone through it. The other thing is, uh, hearing from a lot of people from the outside, um, they're very envious of the way our downtown is concerning the buildings and how, um, uh, there's no, uh, uh, open spots, it's a continuous section of, of, um, South Main Street. You have Alexandria's, which has proved it so important to the area. You have the Music Shop across the street.
DJs, yep.
In fact, Mexican Fiesta's moved in, um, you have, um, you know, the, the Cherry and Webb Building, uh.
Harry's.
The Harry's has been a staple. There, there are some buildings, like the one on South Main Street, that, that is really bad, that needs to be turned around. We've had a lot of interest in it, it's just, you know, we're going to take it by tax title. Uh, I agree with the parking study, um, I agree that we should be looking at parking that is behind the buildings that we have now. You'll see that some of it was, um, uh, successful with the board and school, uh, being parking, uh, for the restaurant. You also see some parking that was done for Alexandria's behind, I mean, when I was a kid, that was Modern Furniture, um, which is now Alexandria's. So, um, as, as we go on, uh, some attention needs to be definitely given to, um, South Main Street, uh, but also, you know, we, we, we've been really, really focused on Pleasant Street.
Yeah. I yield, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dion, do you have any money that you can get paid for a traffic study within your department for South Main Street?
Well, they just, they just had a traffic study done by, um, Dan Agia, parking study. The traffic, the traffic study, um, would probably be a planning and, and management, we'd have to look at that, we'd have to see, um, that goes against our twenty percent admin cap and, uh, the way we've been taking hits lately, um, with the new president and, and not knowing if community development is going to actually be, be able to keep going in the future. It's, it's a tough situation right now. We took about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars in cuts for this year. So, um, twenty percent of that is, you know, like I said, forty thousand, thirty, forty thousand dollars. So, um, I don't think a, uh, traffic study would be something that would be costly, but I agree with you, I think it's something needs to be done on the city side, if it's community development or the city, some type of parking, uh, some type of, uh, study for the traffic flow to see if that could be, um, made a one-way with diagonal parking, um, which would, you know, bring more people probably into the area, you know? I love that diagonal parking, I see it in these old cities and stuff and old towns and it's beautiful, you know?
Well, the TDI Group has been talking with SERPED, the Regional Planning Agency, and they have wanted to do projects in Fall River. And I know Dan Agiar is on committees of theirs. And so the North Downtown Group has been talking with them about doing a study for traffic on North Downtown. It would totally make sense to ask for them to do a study for both. And they have funding to do those kinds of studies.
Perfect. Is it the will of the committee, uh, to refer this to the full council with, um, for the, full council to make, for this committee to make a recommendation to the full council to, uh, ask the administration engage with, um, necessary departments? Has been articulated tonight, um, to review and have a traffic study be commenced to, to see if that, South Main Street can be further developed, since it is probably the consensus here tonight that traffic is probably the most, uh, parking is the most important ingredient for this to be successful. And if anything can come from that, maybe that could be it. Is there, is there a will of the committee for that?
I would say so, I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made by Consular Reposo to refer this resolution up to the full council to consider action, um, to refer to the mayor. A recommendation to engage the services for a traffic study to be commenced to determine whether or not, um, um, South Main Street could be converted to a one-way or explore other parking, parking options.
Explore the op, op, the options of parking and/or changes to the traffic flow.
There's no.
Committee to the full council for adoption?
We, we can do that, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, that's, that's fine, because I don't think we can refer the item without an action item to vote on in full council, so.
Correct.
Um, that is for this committee to do such and it'll be on the next council agenda. Motion has been made by Consular Reposo, is there a second?
Is that the plan of the project, the proposed project?
This is a, um, this is a plan that was done during the pandemic to figure out a variety of strategies. And the parking study is what I think you especially want to look at right now, that just got published. And, um, that is highly relevant to this recommendation. Were you asking about housing plans?
No, the, the project on the South Main Street, uh, because I'm like, since I'm new and stuff, I, I would love to see the detail.
Send this to you.
So the understanding. And, um, also you said, um, you still haven't have a committee, uh, in place yet, right?
Well, the committee that was in place that did this plan has kind of morphed into a committee that's focusing on North Main right now. So we may, it may be a wise idea to create a committee that's going back and focusing on South Main.
I think that would be a good idea to have a self, uh, uh, committee on that one. So that way the North, um, doesn't focus on, uh, on the North Main Street.
Oh, wow, yeah.
And, um, second question. I know we're still on a South Main project and then what happened to the North, North? Cause they have two of them, or South Main and North, North, North Project?
Well, what happened is a lot of the energy of the South Main Street group just wasn't, wasn't gelling. And the businesses in North Main said, yeah, we really want to work together, we really want to make this happen. So there's a lot of energy working on kind of getting foot traffic on North Main and dealing with some pedestrian safety issues and a variety of things. And, um, that leaves some of that energy no longer on South Main. And so it may be important to think about how do we rejuvenate a group really focusing on South Main?
I see, cause the way I'm listening, it's just like, it seemed like it's shifting to South Main and then to North Main and then once the South Main get all active, get all business, um, coming in, and then what happened to the North? Cause right now the North Main Street, uh, downtown is, is, is not very vibrant, it's like very.
Neither is vibrant. I mean, North Main has some more vibrancy right now than South Main. You've got a lot happening on Purchase Street. And, you know, I'm concerned about Jerry Lawton Park because there was all kinds of thinking about what activities would go on in Jerry Lawton Park and we have it done now. And people need to be thinking about what concerts, what pop-up things are going to happen there. So it may be important to really have two groups.
Can you give me, uh, the question, who is in charge of the North Main?
I can send them.
What information? Are you talking about the report that she has with you right now with the traffic study?
The, the people, like, the committee, right?
Yeah, I can give you information about that committee, we meet once a month and.
Cause I would like to, uh, be, uh, go, go there and observe, so that we can learn more about it.
Great.
Do you yield, Consular?
I yield.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, motion has been made by Consular Reposo, seconded by Consular Tiff. Any further discussion on the motion to send this resolution to the council for adoption? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda tonight is another resolution referred to the subcommittee. I'll read it into the record. Whereas the city of Fall River has received various forms of fa, federal funding to improve sidewalk streets and landscaping with various areas of the Flint neighborhood. And whereas there are many ongoing projects to assist nonprofits and business owners within the neighborhood to update, renovate and improve various storefronts, sidewalks, and shared public spaces. And whereas these projects will improve the quality of life and economic growth for the residents, business owners, and visitors of the city of Fall River, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism convene with the administration, the Executive Director of the Community Development Agency, and any other interested parties to discuss the ongoing redevelopment of the Flint neighborhood, provide updates on the current projects utilizing the funding provided, and share general information regarding various events that will assist in the improvement of this area. Consular Reposo?
So, I, I'm, I'm happy to say that I've heard this presentation already. Mr. Dion has gone around to multiple neighborhood association meetings, um, and presented this and particularly to the Flint as well, which I was, it was a welcome, um, conversation. I will, I will allow you to go through it, Mr. Dion, I just have one quick question because I'm ahead of the game on this. As far as the section of Pleasant Street that is, um, thirteen forty-five, thirteen fifty-one, and thirteen sixty-five, as well as fourteen fifty-three, AKA the ones that are going to get demolished. What is the timeline? Do you have an updated timeline of when we will see that reality?
I don't.
Okay. Nothing, nothing in the immediate?
Uh, we're, we're probably looking at, um, uh, two years away.
Two years, okay.
And the reason why is, is, um, uh, the Urban Renewal Plan right now that we have is going through the MEEPER, uh, and that just takes time.
Okay.
And once we have that plan, we'll be in a better position to acquire the properties, which will be the first piece.
Yes.
And the complexity here is that we need to, um, if we're going to, uh, put together a package of numerous properties, which a couple of these envision, we're going to have to go to different owners and purchase the properties. And that's always known to be a time-consuming process.
Process.
But the fourteen sixty-five, fourteen fifty-three, and fourteen forty-one, that may be able to go sooner because one building may be able to be just rehabbed in the nearer future.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I will say, I spend a lot of time in the Flint because I work in the Flint, um, happy to see some of the things that are already underway. Storefronts, obviously, were welcome change. Some of the bigger buildings of, I know have been purchased and already starting to do some work in them, which is great. And I know we did some work at Father Travos's the other day with the, um, Community Garden, which was nice to see. I guess my only concern, I think, is probably separate from this, but again, it's part of the neighborhood, is just some of the graffiti that I've seen along some of those buildings.
There will be a graffiti day very soon.
Ooh, you just made me so happy today.
We've gone out and, uh, um, we've met with all of the businesses and all of the, uh, uh, housing projects in that vicinity. All the way from, uh, County Street up Eastern Avenue, I'm sorry, Pleasant Street, down to Alden Street. And, uh, we have certifications from each of those landlords that have, uh, a waiver, waiver certification. So very soon we will be going out on a specific day and the city will be removing all the graffiti in those areas. So you'll see the graffiti that's, uh, will be taken off that, uh, old gas station down on Alden Street and then there's some properties through Ple, uh, Pleasant Street that have it.
Pleasant and Cash, for example.
Yeah, so if you know of anywhere, um, that, uh, is of particular interest, just jot it down, let me know the address, we'll see if that address is, is, uh, on our list. If it's not, we'll add it and we'll go out there with, um, a waiver to have that taken care of.
Perfect. And let me ask a question, since we're on that topic and it has to do with the Flint. One of the, uh, points I brought up at the budget meetings was about graffiti removal and my frustration that not enough, I believe, has been done after we changed the ordinance, we got some ARPA money for the new graffiti removal machines. Is it, in your opinion, Mr. Dion, that the ordinance is not doing enough to support what needs to be done? Do we feel that we need to revisit that as a committee, um, further to, to get more aggressive action done when it comes to graffiti?
I think, I think we just need to be aggressive. I think, uh, going forward, um, if, if we see it on there, we need to take it off. We need to just be more aggressive. We have to dedicate some time, uh, I don't know if it's a day here, day there, but we have to go out to certain areas of the city that are having graffiti problems and remove it. If you get, uh, if it gets consistent to you, you just start living with it. And, and I see it all the time as I drive here and as I come into the city, you'll see it in different spots and you, you just become used to it. And, and that's not supposed to happen. So we need to take it off as soon as it needs to, as soon as it goes up, we need to take it down. So we can look at the ordinance, we can see what, what's, what's happening with that, but, uh, I would love, um, that I think that the, you know, DCM people who are overworked, um, just need to get out there and, and take down the graffiti as it goes up.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my larger concern was that when we redid the ordinance, you know, one of the things we, I talked about then was that there was not enough teeth to the ordinance to then go out and get it cleaned up. So I guess my question is, if that's not the concern right now and it's just a matter of going out and doing it, then fine, we'll leave it be. But if it's a situation where there's graffiti and we're running into kind of like red tape about getting it taken care of or who's responsible, what have you, then that's when I would engage the conversation about it, but.
I think all graffiti is a responsibility for the city to take care of.
Fair enough.
We need to, we need to, we need to deal with, um, landlords and, and private landlords, get them to do a waiver, make sure that we're not responsible for it and take it down.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Any comments on this resolution? I think those, that question and this present.
No, I just, I just wanted, I know we went through, sat through the presentation, I just wanted to, to present to you, I mean, we did this booklet for, uh, a seven million dollar bond that was put in by Senator Roderick's, um, in the, uh, state. Bond bill. And we want that, we want some of that money. So we put this together, a lot has been going on with, um, uh, Pleasant Street. We decided with, uh, uh, funding that if we started to do some storefronts that it would, um, uh, you know, have other people come on and do their storefront. We've taken some, uh, anchor tenants, being White Rose Bakery and Gilbert's and those, and we've done five storefronts. Uh, on the third page of this, uh, you'll see I have pending applications for the storefronts right now. There's, um, about eight or nine that are pending. We're waiting for funding for those, uh, uh, properties. The bond bill, well, first of all, we've put it, we've gotten a set aside from the EDI HUD project for about one point six million dollars. That is to do, uh, roadwork, infrastructure work throughout, um, Pleasant Street. We've, we've really looked at, um, housing projects in, uh, that neighborhood. I can report that, um, fourteen forty-six and fourteen fifty-four Pleasant Street, there's thirteen residential units. We closed on that probably about two weeks ago. That property will be six market rate units and seven, uh, workforce, um, affordable housing units.
Which address is that?
Uh, if you go on, on, uh, that's fourteen forty-six and fourteen fifty-four Pleasant. We, uh, right after that project.
When you say closed on it, you closed on it?
Yep.
The Community Development Station?
Well, it's owned by a private, uh, developer.
Yep.
Um, we, uh, committed a certain amount of funding to that private developer, uh, and we, we've, uh, gone out for bid. The contractor shouldn't be starting that project right now, I think he's there now.
CD, uh what funding did they get?
Home funding.
Home funding.
Fourteen thirty-eight Pleasant is owned by the same private owner. Uh fourteen thirty-eight is owned by the by the same owner. So as soon as we get done the thirteen residential units, we'll be moving into the eight residential units that you see there. The twelve seventy, twelve eighty-eight Pleasant and sixteen sixteen Pleasant was recently purchased. They started working on the twelve seventy and twelve eighty-eight Pleasant. And I know that seventeen eighty-three Pleasant um was six residential units for just the bottom of the property. We looked at that to develop in uh commercial uh properties on the bottom, but there is a lack of parking in the area. So the owner wants to turn those into um some type of residential units. So we're we're, you know, going along, we're developing housing in the area. That area, uh that housing will will be affordable housing. Uh we'll have a s- a portion of affordable housing to those developments. We also, in that neighborhood, um applied for a Love Ya Block grant program. Through um Bloomberg Philanthropies. We were awarded a two-year grant for just a hundred thousand dollars. We have a full-time person that's working on the Flint, that's working for Love Ya Block. Uh her name is Gloria Sadler. She is out in the community. She is dedicated full-time just to that Flint area. So when you saw last uh this past Saturday with the um uh Community Garden. That is a Love Ya Block uh program. We will be awarding uh very soon, probably next Monday, uh mini grants uh in that area. To uh. Spectrum uh. Spectrum Group. Uh there is also um the Black uh.
Bristol Black Collective.
Bristol Black Collective. Um there is uh an award for the Yar-Yar Corpse. And also for um, uh there's another one too. I forget which one it is. There's so many of them. But we we will be reporting uh on that on Monday. So as you can see, you know, there is a a uh real partnership between community development and the redevelopment authority. To look at these buildings, uh like she said, on thirteen fifty-one, thirteen forty-five Pleasant and thirteen sixty-five Pleasant. To look at those buildings and 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 uh once the urban renewal plan is done to start. You know, getting getting a appraisal on that property and courting those owners to see. You know, what would be the cost of the sale of those properties. So we're we're very close, hopefully um. We're close with the bond bill. Uh we've uh sent them more additional information of exactly when we needed the money. We're talking about improving the Cass Street parking lot with new paving, with some cameras. Some beautification and maybe doing uh um some arm work to that uh uh area. We were talking about doing some uh new sidewalk improvements, trees, upgraded light fixtures. And doing some more storefront improvements to about seven or eight storefronts. So uh, you know, the Flint Pleasant Street was a very vibrant community when I was growing up. I'm from that area. You know, I was telling Gloria, it's really important to bring back a real sense of pride to that area. We have some great anchor tenants. We do have uh vacancies. And um, you know, the mayor and I, we've talked about a pilot program with community development. To defray the cost of maybe some rent for people moving into the area. Maybe picking up six months to um twelve months of half the rent. In majority of people that we've talked to in the Flint don't need another mortgage on their uh property. So the storefronts was a grant. Uh they were to give um a five-year affordability. So that they would not sell the property within those five years. We did have a property that we did not go with because the owner wanted to turn that property around. It is not our um goal to improve a person's property so that they can just turn around and sell it. You know, we really want to make some changes to uh the Pleasant Street area. I think we have done a lot in the past. We've uh redid the face of Alden Street. Consulor Reposa will be happy to know that um we're going to work on putting better signage up. Some park benches uh for Father Trevos's Park. Um I actually went there on Saturday and I couldn't figure a way to get in.
Welcome to my life.
It's like the best hidden park in the city from what I can see. So um uh we're working on that. So there's a lot of things going on at the moment uh with Pleasant Street. And we look forward to if if there's anything that the council could could bring to us, any kind of um. Ideas or anything like that, it'd be great.
Just just a real quick question. Sixteen sixteen Pleasant, obviously it's being redeveloped. Is there any reality where that fence could be removed at some point? Because that's just that's just caused a hazard over there with people walking in the middle of the street.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk. Do we do we know if if we had conversations with the developer where things would be safe enough over there to allow people to walk back on that sidewalk?
Yeah, the 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 concept that the developer showed us is actually beautiful. There would not be any commercial on the first floor. It would be all residential. I will talk to him about removing that fence. I know that fence was put up for security purposes. Because of infrastructure uh to the building, but I will find out what he's doing with that. I'll also talk to Glenn Hathaway because that was put up by Glenn. So we'll find out. Uh I'm assuming the fence has to stay as long as the X stays on the building.
Yeah.
But I'll find out about that.
Thank you. I yield.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to table for further updates?
Motion to table.
Motion to table has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. The committee has been made by Consulor Reposo, seconded by Consul Tith. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it.